Please silence all of your electronic devices. If you're appearing today, please introduce yourself and spell your names. And if you're here to testify, please come forward, introduce yourself, spell your name, and be sworn in. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for action.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular minutes of the thirty-sixth, the forty-sixth, the fourth and the fifth meetings, as well as the executive session minutes of the thirty-sixth, forty-sixth, and the fifth meetings.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, the regular minutes of the thirty-sixth, forty-sixth, fourth and fifth meetings and the executive session minutes of the thirty-sixth, forty-sixth, and the fifth meeting are approved by this commission. Moving into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one, application number one eight dash one three seven eight seven from one nine three eight Kakaoaku LLC. Mr. Ordin.
Hello, Your Honor, my name is Michelle Relleva, R E L L E S I V A.
Todd Sutton, S U T T O N.
Thank you, Mr. Ordin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, uh, Commissioners. In this instance, uh, administration will be asking that this matter be continued two weeks to September twentieth. Public hearing kept open, uh, there is an issue with the affidavit of mailing that was submitted with this application and we need the ability to confirm.
You understand?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner?
Motion to continue, agenda item one, application number one eight dash one three seven eight seven for two weeks, public hearing kept open.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, uh, agenda item number one, uh, is continued to September twentieth.
Thank you.
Okay, these are license applications, temporary license application, agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one four six five one from T M Y Corporation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the members of the commission. My name is David Sir, appearing on behalf of the applicant T M Y Foundation. To my right is the applicant's principal, Miss Tammy Song, T A M M Y S O N G.
Have you had an opportunity to review the investigator's report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I haven't nothing to add.
Thank, thank you very much, Commissioners?
Motion to approve temporary application number one nine dash one four six five one.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one four six five one is approved. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Calling agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one four nine zero four, Morgan Mello Enterprises.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
My name is Craig Martin, M A R T I N, General Manager for Round Table Pizza White Poppin, Morgan Mello Enterprises Inc.
I'm Dave Mello, D A B I D, M E L L O, the owner of Morgan Mello in the right hand.
Thank you, Commissioner?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one four nine six nine zero four.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one four nine zero four is approved.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number four. Catering license application, agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one four nine four one from Sedexo America LLC, Mr. Ordin Stein.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is June Ordnstein, General Manager for Sedexo. Um, no changes to the application or the investigator report.
Thank you very much, Commissioners? Mr. Ordin Stein, can you walk us through the security plan?
Um, do you, do you wanna?
Just wanna explain the security plan generally and then a specific part.
Okay, um. So, it, according to the map, um, because, uh, we, we have to have one continuous license premise. I did have to break it up so that there is a general walkway to get to access from the, um, from the west side to the east side, so, uh, the license premise, um, is continuous and I, uh, there's two, um, guardians that will be separated from each other and only twenty-one and over will be allowed inside, um. Uh, besides that, um, uh, two drinks will be allowed, uh, for purchase. Um, and, and to be, um, possessed at the same time, uh. In the pool area, uh, there will be some, uh, there will be hockey, uh, uh, twelve house cans. These twelve house cans, um. Uh, because everybody in that, that area is, uh, already of age, um, we'll, we'll, we'll be looking for, uh, just the mono or bond that they're gonna be possessing at the same time.
At middle of the page, it has a heading Security, subsection B, number of security personnel says at least thirty-three event. Security ten H P D, twenty-two Sedexo. I think I asked you this in a prior application. When I read the words at least, it tells me that that's your, that's your floor, correct? You're gonna have that much and all that. In other words, you're gonna have at least thirty-three security, at least ten H P D, and at least twenty-three Sedexo security. Is that accurate?
Um, at least under thirty-three, um, event security, that's correct, uh, ten H P D, twenty-two Sedexo, um. But, um, as I look through this, um, security plan, I have even ten. But I assure you, there will be at least twenty-two there.
Twenty-two Sedexo?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Ordin Stein, let me just clarify one thing, right? So, maximum security, the thirty-three officers, they're provided by the city, the city spender?
Um, I'm not exactly sure who, uh, they are, who pays them, but as far as, um, uh, who they report to is the city.
It is the city, right?
That's correct.
But you have still, you are still responsible as a licensee.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, and, um, so we all work together and, um, there's a, um, there, there are communication with the city, uh, through their radio system also.
Thank you.
Because I've held this event several times before, yeah.
For this capone one, uh, just twice before, um, not every year, but maybe like every other year, so.
All right, anything else? Um, motion to approve application number one nine dash one four nine four one.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one four nine four one is approved. Calling agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one five zero five seven from Sedexo America LLC, Mr. Ordin Stein, again, do you?
Hello, uh, good afternoon, my name is June Ordnstein, uh, General Manager for Sedexo, uh, no changes to the investigator report.
Thank you, Commissioners?
This is the one you folks have held, like, at least five times, right?
Yes, and, and this is the one I always change this to, yes.
Maybe we should, uh, you should walk us through this whole scenario.
Okay, um, so the greeting festival, uh, is, um, I guess, uh, targeted to the Japanese tourists where I believe there, there's a run that happens like outside of the Waki Kisho. Uh, nevertheless, uh, there are two days of their festival on, on, that happens at the Waki Kisho on Friday night and Saturday night, uh, both starting at, uh, both entertainment starting at five, so, uh, we open at four. Um, Hawaiian music on Friday and, uh, international Japanese music on Saturday. Um, recently, uh, submitted a current attendance or current expected attendance, um, uh, the Saturday we should, or Friday night, we should expect only about eight hundred and on Saturday about eighteen hundred. It's because, um, more Japanese tour groups are involved with that one. Um, I also did submit a, uh, a revision to the floor plan and a project for that, um, you know, we, uh, myself, the city, and, um, promoters were closely together and, uh, it was decided to have a garden on top and in the middle, but, uh, recently, they, uh, had to make group for, um, vendors up top and, we already, so, so basically we dislodge the, the terrace, uh, also, uh, removing some seats. The first nine houses are, will be reserved and I, I wouldn't be able to tell if there, uh, peacefulness, twenty-one and over, so we moved it for the license.
Mr. Ordin Stein, what, what are the general demographics for the attendees at this event? Are they primarily the Japanese visitors?
Yes. In, in, in the past, too, I believe we had like, um, the, the, um, we used to have, we, we draw the local college, for example, like Magic, they're popular, but, um, uh, it's not really marketed to them, so they, you know, it is primarily Japanese.
Question, um, the identification of the, uh, license area, how do you propose to segregate? Uh, because you're going between that ninth row and the tenth row, and is it just gonna be?
Uh, there will be a barrier, um, the, the entire, the entire, uh, all the red lines will be barriers.
Okay.
And it will be manned with, um. Yes, will be, will, uh, the lines will be also manned by, um, security. And, and my ID checkers are, uh, are, um, educated on reading the, the Japanese license.
And how are they gonna enter that, um, the license?
Um, yeah, I actually have a, 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 a map. Not, not, not with me, but, um, the entrance, the entrance, uh, will be, uh, the line will be, um, there'll be another set of barricades on, on the outside of license premise to control them from entering from the, the top of, of, uh, the license area and take through this grassy area and they could flow into the seats and this big walkway over here would, would be to exit out.
Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one five zero five seven.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one five zero five seven is approved.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify something for the record quickly, uh, to specify that, uh, application number nineteen one five zero five seven is, uh, covers two days of, of license activity, which is Friday, September seventh and Saturday, September eighth, there's a little, uh, ambiguity on the agenda that I just wanted to clear.
Well, that's, just to clarify that, that's both days, Mr. Ordin?
That's correct.
Two to eleven, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, Sat-, uh, Friday and Saturday, two o'clock to eleven o'clock, right? Would you like to have that included in the motion and so on?
Um, I don't think it's, um, necessary, you, you approved the application number, I just wanted to be clear on the record because there's an ambiguity on the agenda.
It's so noted for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ordin.
Thank you.
Let's go into, um, agenda item number six, these are stock transfer applications. Application number one nine dash one four six seven five for Million Restaurant Inc.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners, Robin Melcher on behalf of Million Restaurant Inc. And to my right is Charlene Mira, the prospective shareholder. We have reviewed their report and there are no amendments or changes.
Thank you, Commissioners?
No changes to the menu, huh?
He's just gonna add on some of menu.
Oh.
Did not bring any sentence?
It's good food you have. Any questions, Commissioners? Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one four six seven five.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one four six seven five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Calling agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one four seven six five from Sports Screen Inc. Mr. Ordin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. To my right is the applicant, his brother C Sam Fo. She has further accounts of weight look, uh, we have no changes to the investigator's report. She will be using the same accountant, so she'll have the, all the books.
She'll have all the books, thank you very much, Commissioner?
Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one four seven six five.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one four seven six five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eight, these are requests, request number one eight dash one four five two eight from Rumor Spear LLC, Mr. Shinzato.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners.
Ross.
Ross, sir.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Ross Shinzato, authorized agent. And to my right is Debbie Eichelberger, she's a manager and agent for Rumor Spear LLC.
Thank you, Commissioners?
Mr. Shinzato, this is just to, um, update the floor plan, the natural existing practice. It's just to update, uh, liquor commission records to reflect what, uh, the.
Actually, actually.
And I just have two corrections. On page two, um, where it says exhibit C, it should be exhibit D. And same thing on page three. What we want to have approved is, uh, exhibits D.
Uh, motion to approve request number one eight dash one four five two eight.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eight, request number one eight dash one four five two eight, please approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number nine, request number one nine dash one five zero four six from F S M B LLC.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Neil Gota appearing on behalf of F S M B LLC. To my right is Matthew Troy, manager. This is just a request to change the date of an already approved, uh, catering application. Had to be changed due to, uh, to hurricanes.
Thank you, Commissioners?
Uh, motion to approve request number one nine dash one five zero four six.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nine, request number one nine dash one five zero four six is approved.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully no one.
Yes.
Hurricane, not even on range. Calling agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one five zero six four from Kika Bukowski.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members, uh, Kika Bukowski, B U K O S K I, on behalf of Otabi Wedding Corporation.
Thank you, Commissioners?
This is a two-pronged request, yeah, Mr. Bukowski?
Yes, and.
Uh, waiver of law and, and also, um, to, uh, request to u- utilize existing documents on file.
Uh, for a pending application on the same premise, yes.
Okay.
And, um, if I might add, um, uh, the request for fifty days is a, is a a safe request, um, we ask consideration if we do not use all the fifty days. We could ask for, uh, consideration for the refund of the balance, the unused days.
Uh, I believe that would be something you would have to pick up with.
Actually, it's the commission's call.
Okay.
Uh, our, our administrative procedures does not provide for refunds you have in the past, uh, granted that leniency towards certain applicants who have made the request.
So, uh, Mr. uh, Bukowski, could you please explain to the commission why you feel, uh, this commission should be justifying and allowing you a refund?
Uh, it, it's just a request for consideration, the, the, the payment of the fifty days will be made upfront. Uh, and there's a possibility that we may be issued a, a permanent license prior to the fifty days. So, we're just requesting consideration if that's the case, that's what I wanted to hear, Commissioners?
And what is the reason for the special liquor license?
Uh, in anticipation of the premises opening prior to issuance of the permanent license.
So, you folks are just, um, covering your bases, correct?
And would you represent to this commission for the record that none of the officers have been convicted of a felony?
Yes.
Since the last time?
Yes.
Motion to convene to executive session.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, we are now in executive session.
Okay, we are, um, now back on the official record of Commissioners, do you have a second fraction?
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve request number one nine dash one five zero six four and authorize a refund for unused days.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one five zero six four is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bukowski. Chair, motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items eleven through eighteen inclusive.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, adoption decision in order, agenda items number eleven through eighteen inclusive are approved. Moving into adjudication, good afternoon now.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel Pedro Ogahto.
Okay. Um, Mr. Kiyoshi, I'm gonna move agenda item number nineteen, which is tied.
Yeah, I was gonna say yesterday.
Calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Calling agenda item number twenty, Club Roxanne.
Um, Members of the Commission, Club Roxanne, um, did skip, did submit a, um, an admission by mail, which can I approach to present it to the commission? And Ms. Ogahto, is their plea included in there, written request for waiver? Yes. And what is their plea? No contest. Uh, motion to accept the, uh, written re- waiver and plea of no contest.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty, the no contest plea is accepted.
What's your recommendation? The recommendation is a two hundred fifty dollar fine. Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, Food Pantry Inc., Mr. Ogahto.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Sirai Robert Ogahto on behalf of Food Pantry Limited. I am the authorized agent on, on this matter. I respectfully request for a continuance of this matter, I know we have prior continuances, but, uh, we want, we really need additional time to prepare for this one. I did discuss this matter with Ms. Ogahto, Ms. Ogahto before on today's hearing.
Any objections? No objections. Um, do you have a date certain?
Request October eighteen, please, that's what my, my client represented.
And you're okay with that, Ms. Ogahto? Yes. Uh, motion to continue agenda item twenty-one, Food Pantry, to October eighteen.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-one is continued to October eighteen, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Foodland Supermarket, store number sixteen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, this is Sirai Robert Ogahto, on behalf of Foodland, Seiva Beach Store, President to my right, Mr. Brian Luna. He is the district manager, first name B R I A and last name L U N A. And this time, like, the wave reading of the charge and plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
This item involves a compliance check. Uh, incident occurred on May fifth, two thousand and eighteen, the cashier did request for ID, but game, became confused with the date of birth and unfortunately completed the sale. As a result of this incident, the cashier employee is no longer employed by Foodland. Um, just to give you a background, Foodland trains employees, they have designated trainers. Um, that is three days of classroom training and two day, um, live shadow training as well. Um, after this incident, the store managers and head cashiers had a meeting with all the cashier employees and stressed the importance of, of preventing the sale of liquor to minors. Um, in addition, we plan to retrain the cashiers in October and November of this year prior to the holiday season.
Ms. Ogahto, what is your recommendation? This is a first offense recommendation, is a one thousand dollar fine. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
And second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-two, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Legends.
Good afternoon, my name is John Harrison, J O H N, H A R I S O N, I'm the president of Legends Incorporated.
On or about, I'm sorry, on or during the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, in the city and county of Honolulu, stated for a licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of rule three dash eighty-one dash one seven point five six of the rule of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
So, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-three, the no contest plea is accepted.
Uh, this is a first offense and I have spoken with Mr. Harrison, I understand that the, um, that any difference in gross liquor sales, the taxation has already been paid by Legends. So, as a result, we're recommending a five hundred dollar fine.
If I could present a statement to the members, because I speaking out wouldn't hold out very well. Can I approach?
Oh.
And, I don't know.
You can do it, party.
Could I ask you to read it yourselves, it's personal?
Yes.
Would that be possible, I'd make plenty of copies and it would.
I'm Mr. Harrison, I've already discussed what's contained in the written statement. I'm Mister Harrison, I've already discussed what's contained in the written statement.
Uh motion to issue a letter of recommendation.
Second.
The movement second, all of us in favor?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, I retract my motion.
Thank you. Mister Harrison, you presented us with a letter dated September five, two thousand eighteen. It's not signed, but it has your name, John Harrison, the president of the, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Um I understand the sensitivity of the sensitivity of each other letter, um I don't think we would want to make this part of the record, if that's acceptable to the prosecutor?
No objection.
Okay, thank you.
Uh motion to issue a letter of recommend.
Second.
The movement second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-three, uh letter of recommend will be issued.
Thank you for your time consideration.
So, mark mark these for destruction?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh we can recommend.
Can I return that to Mister Harrison? We'll return your letter. Thank you, sir.
Have we finished them?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling the agenda items number twenty-four, KS Market. We are back.
Good afternoon, Mister Chairman.
Good afternoon, this today.
I'm also back from May. The J W Lee LLC doing business as KS, Matai Market, DBA KS Market. See that to my right is uh Mister Richard Tachibana. And we'll wave the reading of the charges.
Would you like to plead? Your plea?
Oh, no contest, thank you.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
The movement second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, the no contest plea is accepted.
Um just for the commission's information, the what was um confiscated by HPD in this matter was six pot of gold multi-game gambling machines. This is a first offense recommendation, is a one thousand dollar fine.
If I may add, I went out there personally, checked out the premises, there is no machine of any kind, no more.
When did you go?
Uh, two days. So just wanna make sure that the, if I made the representation, I went out there and checked it out myself.
Thank you very much, but the uh the violation happened.
But as a reminder, there's no machines whatsoever, not gonna happen again.
A little bit late, but.
And Mister Tachibana, you understand, what what what's the problem with these machines?
Nope.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
The movement second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh agenda item number twenty-four, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number five, Nojo Maru Sushi.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Uh my name is Go Kobayashi. Uh G O K O B A Y A S H I. Uh I'm an authorized agent for AP Company Kalakaua LLC, DBA, uh Taranojou slash Maru Sushi.
On or about July twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee made physical alterations within its licensed premises to win a doorway and an additional restroom was created next to existing restaurants without the prior written approval of the Liquor Commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-three dash sixty-two subsection A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Mister Kobayashi, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
The movement second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-five, the no contest plea is approved.
Recommendation is a five hundred dollar fine, this is a first offense.
Mister Kobayashi, is there comment?
No comment.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
The movement second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-five, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Mister Kobayashi, excuse me for my uh my pronunciation wasn't even close.
He tries.
I tried to break him.
We all try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go back to the um.
Nice.
Yes, Chair, um due to a possible conflict with this agenda item, I'm gonna have to use my.
Okay, Mr. Harrison.
I think the no contest, the no contest pleas for one and three have already been accepted.
Yes.
Yes.
This this is the penalty phase, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
The penalty phase and then we're doing the duty, uh actually, the hearing on two, right?
We're doing two. Yeah. Right, okay, fine, okay, so.
And I have a witness, but he's not, he works for King's Law, doesn't work for my client, so I'm gonna have to wait outside while Mister Sam.
Um so you wanna do the penalty, um two charges first and then move into the contested?
Calling agenda item number nineteen, Champs. This is the penalty phase uh for violation number one.
What's your recommendation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
They've already created no contest.
Okay, I wasn't sure if we were gonna wait until the end of the entire.
I just wanna get those out of the way first and then we'll move to the charged, contested charge.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. In that case, my apologies, I was not prepared for the penalty phase right at the second. The recommendation is a five hundred dollar fine, excuse me, for charge one? Yes.
This and the uh the issue with number three were both due to the accountant who didn't properly file the forms. But nevertheless, they were not accurate, accurately reported. Oh, it's more than accounting error, there's a serious issue with accountant, not not really understanding what she's supposed to do. It's it's more than just a mistake. Yeah, it's, I kinda don't wanna go into it, but it's more than just.
Can you represent, will you try and be allowed on a professional?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes.
How much your recommendation for charge three, Ms. Ogata?
Five hundred dollars as well.
And on charge three, this relates to the um sales for King's Law, their catering sales that weren't reported. My client did give them to the accountant, the accountant failed to include it on the form.
These are data based on the representation, Mister Kuchi, is charge one somehow related to charge two?
They're they're actually different, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, they're they are different.
Yeah, yeah, and and let me kinda explain, because one relates to the catering itself that wasn't included, but the report itself on the gross liquor sales was incorrect. So they're two different, it, you know, it's, yeah, two different charges, unfortunately.
Okay, so I wanna make sure two and three are different because we're gonna hear evidence on two.
Two is different because two is a charge relating to whether they supplied any food to the law.
Okay, is is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh motion to uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one, as well as five hundred dollars for charge three.
Movement second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nineteen, charge number one, and charge number three, recommended fine of five hundred dollar per charge. Okay, so for charge number two, um I understand that's gonna be contested, Mister Kuchi?
Yes.
Okay, and you also gotta use the character proceed?
Yes.
Um I wanna start with the cities open, Mr. Kuchi?
Oh, uh is Mister Kuchi waving, waving of the charge?
Yeah, wavering of charge and then plea, no, um not guilty.
Okay. In that case, um the evidence today is going to show that Champs was audited by the Liquor Commission, um Liquor Commission, Liquor Control, excuse me, auditor, Sang Von Fila. Um his audit did show that Champs failed to make the thirty percent minimum food sales requirement. It'll be evidenced by his testimony as well as exhibits that have been submitted to this commission. Mister Von Fila will be able to testify as to the reason that the audit was prompted, what he discovered as a result of his audit, and why he believes that Champs did violate, excuse me, rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-one point seven subsection B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Thank you, Mister Kuchi, if you wish to make that on seven?
Yes, I do. We don't question that the thirty percent food requirement was not met, but we dispute that no food was provided to King's Law. Some food was provided to King's Law as part of the catering arrangement. A uh email was sent from uh Liquor Liquor Commission Auditor Sang Von Fila to King's Law, and they responded that uh food was provided, and James Lauer, who is with King's Law, obviously here, will testify that food was provided. Not all the food was provided, but the rule does not require all food to be provided, just some food to be provided.
If you would like to, Mister, Mister Von Fila is um gonna be my only witness.
I'm just uh, for the record, are you, are you prepared to put on your first witness?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes. Sang Von Fila.
Please.
Wanna swear, you in? Do you swear as the testimony you give today's hearing, do you truthfully, not on the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we will stipulate to exhibit A, B, and C coming in to others.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mister Kuchi, the commission will accept, once evidence exhibits A, B, and C, I'll go back prosecution.
Thank you. Can I please have you state your name for the record?
Sang Von Fila.
And what is your occupation?
I'm the liquor control, or the, of the liquor commission, of the city and county of Honolulu.
Okay, and how long have you been so employed?
About eleven years.
Okay, um as a part of your job, are you assigned to audit businesses that possess liquor licenses?
Yes.
Okay, and were, in this case, were you assigned to audit Champs located at three, four, five, seven, Wyland Avenue?
Yes.
And what exactly prompted the audit?
Um this licenses was selected for it to assure that they include their catering sales in the um the gross liquor sales report.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, did you repeat what you said? Um we select um this audit because um we want to assure that the licensee included is um catering food sales in the gross liquor sales report.
Um and did you in fact perform an audit on Champs?
Yes.
And what did you find?
Um we found several um violations, and we also found that um first of all, we found the licensee never had a kitchen to perform the catering service. And then we also found that um the licenses never have um books and records showing catering sales. We also found that um the licensees account and record all the sales from the caterer as liquor sales, no food sales.
Okay. What period of time did the audit encompass?
Um from July um one, two thousand sixteen to June thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, and was Champs supposed to have been providing catering through that entire time?
In that period.
During that period?
Yeah.
Okay. Um I'm going to show you what has been marked as exhibit C for the record. Is this what you used to perform your audit?
Yes.
What is that?
Okay, on the the first page is original gross liquor sales report submitted by Champs.
Okay, and then?
And then on the um second page is the the revised report that I um performed through the audit. And it showed the the different amount, the the first page, they never include um catering sales. And then the the second page is is the um the caterer is included. And then the third page is based on um okay, now, first of all, the licensee only provided five months of sales. So we averaged out the five months um sales, that's how we got the number. And based on that sales, the five month sales, the food, the food sales percentage was only two point nine eight.
So two point nine eight percent, why is that significant?
Um because well, um back to that thing again, that they never had a kitchen, so that's why the food sales were low.
Okay, but when you say that they don't have a kitchen, how do you know they didn't have a kitchen?
Um the accountant told me that um the the kitchen has been renovated.
Okay. And then, when you say that food sales were two point nine eight percent for the five month period, why is that percentage important to you in your audit?
The licensees um is required to meet the thirty percent food sales for the restaurant class two license.
Okay. And obviously, that two point nine eight percent is?
Right, it's way below.
Okay, so by not making the thirty percent minimum food sales, had, did this licensee violate any liquor commission rules to your audit?
Yes, yes, they do.
Do you know which rule it is?
Um for for the thirty percent food sales?
Yes.
It's a rule um three dash eighty-two, that's thirty eight point twenty-two B.
Okay. The um and then based on your information, did the Liquor Commission issue citations for two Champs?
Yes, three, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna show you what has been marked as exhibit A. Do you know what those are?
Yes.
Okay, what are those?
Okay, one is um failing to perform catering functions, rule three dash eighty-two, that's thirty-one, um point seven B.
Is that the one that is based on your audit?
Right. And then the other one is um um failing to maintain adequate books and records.
Okay.
Percentage to rule three, that's eighty-one, that's seventeen point fifty-six. And then the last one is uh failing to include caring sales in gross liquor sales report. Rule three dash eighty-two, that's thirty-one, point seven G.
Okay, and then to your knowledge, are these fair and accurate copies of the citations that are issued by the Liquor Commission?
Yes.
And these are kept in the ordinary course of business by the Liquor Commission?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'm gonna also show you what has been marked as exhibit B. What, to your knowledge, is exhibit B?
Is summarize of my um audit report um prepared by um my supervisor, Akiko Rice.
Okay, so Akiko prepare prepare the summary, why does she prepare the summary?
She's my supervisor and it's based on my my report.
Okay, and you've read through the summary?
Yes.
And when you read through the summary, is that is everything contained in that summary accurate?
Yes.
Okay, um. So I'll take that back, thank you. And these summaries are kept in the normal course of business as well?
Yes.
So I'm gonna go back to exhibit C very briefly. Um I noticed that there are. Several different numbers. Between the first page, the second page, and the third page. How did we, how did you come to? How did you come to the numbers on the second and third page of exhibit C?
It's based on um. The POS system, which is a had been verified to be accurate.
So.
So we we averaged out the five months and then times um the whole year times the twelve.
Okay, so when you say the POS system, you mean that Champs had a point of sale system? That they used to tally up their sales?
Right.
And that re- and those reports were generated. You went and pulled the reports directly from Champs or they were submitted to you?
Ripoff by them.
Okay. But you were able to verify the accuracy of those POS reports?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, no further question.
Now, Mr. Von Field, turn your attention to exhibit B, the second page. Second paragraph, you mentioned a conversation with Ms. Consaco. Who is Ms. Consaco?
That's uh um Champ's accountant.
Okay, and she was the one that said the food sales were low because it's been renovating its entire kitchen.
Right.
And that's the entire statement.
Yes.
Okay, and that's what you base the charge on then? They were renovating the kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, so you turn to exhibit C. The reporting. The first page is the actual gross liquor sales report, see that?
Okay.
Yeah, and it shows food sales of fifty seven thousand four hundred fifty.
Right.
Okay, so did you determine that that amount was correct?
No.
You did it.
But because it has no record to.
Okay.
I couldn't verify that.
Okay, but on the second and third pages, you calculate. The food sales estimated for the year at twenty nine thousand two hundred twenty six thousand fifty one cent.
Yes.
Okay, so could you explain why the difference is there?
Okay, the first page, the original report, it was um, there's no record to to um. Verify, so I didn't even know whether it's correct, incorrect, or no record to show the fifty seven thousand. And then on the second page, the twenty nine thousand, it was based on um the the POS system that they provided.
Okay, and that's the the page three is the month monthly POS system printout. But yet you came to an estimated annual sales of twenty nine two twenty six fifty one because for the five month period. It was only eleven thousand six sixty seven twenty three, right?
Oh, okay, that that would um plus tax.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah.
But you estimated, you took the eleven six sixty seven twenty three. Basically applied it to twelve months, is it five months? That's how you came up?
Yeah.
Twenty nine two twenty six fifty one, is that correct?
Yeah.
But Champ's reporting showed higher liquors, higher food sales of fifty seven thousand four hundred fifty.
But they didn't have a record.
I understand that, but is since one is from the POS system. And they didn't have a record of that, is is that the catering sales for the food sales?
I couldn't.
You don't know? Okay, I'm gonna show you uh this exhibit.
Okay.
And that's an email um that was sent to you. By uh that you sent over to King's Luau, and I'm gonna first ask you who King's Luau is.
King's Luau?
Yeah.
I under- um from what I understand. It's a the people that provide food at the. The catering event.
Well, that's that's the catering event that Champs was catering to, is that correct?
Supposed to.
Yeah, they're supposed to provide food and liquor, is that correct? So you email um somebody at King's Luau and you ask them, we're wondering if you could clarify King's Luau's activities. One, and those champs provided liquor only and nothing else at the luau.
Yes.
King's Luau provide everything in its menu, right? Is that accurate?
Right.
Okay, and the response on the bottom, is that the response you received back?
Yes.
The response has item two, Champs FEC Kimaki also supplies food carrying items. Like poke poi, breads, desserts, etc.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the um licensees except the one B.
No objection.
So did you ever ask this consocu to break down the catering sales to liquor and food?
The catering sales?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, thank you, I have no further question.
Uh just briefly. Assuming that we. Assuming that the fifty seven thousand four hundred fifty dollars listed in line two of page one of exhibit C is correct. Did they, did that meet the thirty percent requirement?
No, it it was only um um nine percent.
Nine percent of their total sales?
Total sales.
Okay. And you didn't, I suppose take this at face value, why? When you say that there was no verification, what do you, what kind of verification would you have been looking for?
Um. Okay, when we do audit, we need to see the um paper trial. In this case, they didn't have any. Only um only um the the POS statement.
So there were no receipts provided?
No receipt.
Or no invoices provided?
No invoice.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing, I have nothing.
Thank you. Um it's supposed to represent their food sales at the restaurant, not the not the um catering places.
And that number is presented by the licensee?
Right.
There's a highlighted portion in the other section of the document, exhibit C, nine point zero one percent.
Yeah, that's that's uh the food percentage.
Is that your handwriting or do you recognize the handwriting?
It's my handwriting.
How did you calculate that?
Oh, yes, um we take food sales over total sales.
On page two of exhibit C, and pardon my ignorance, it looks like a screenshot or something, can you describe what's it?
This is our um um. Access system, the one that we use to record um grocery sales.
And describe how this works, do you or someone I can give up information to the system that then generates?
Okay. Yes, um. The the data on the second page is based on the five months that we receive. Um the five months sales that the licensee provided, and we averaged it out. Two monthly sales and times twelve.
I don't recall if I heard you just to fly to the circle, um what was the five month period that you did?
Oh, it's um from February through June, the POS system.
February uh.
To June two thousand seventeen.
And so with the information you do acquire from the POS system, you could you average it out per month and then you project it forward for twelve months.
Right.
Why is the um food sales on page two highlighted? Is that the average? Is that the total?
Um the tweet page two, oh, that that's uh the total estimator. Right.
Why is the two point four percent highlighted on the?
That that represent the the food sales percentage. Originally in the in the report, it has nine percent. And then after we correct that, we um estimate revise it. It came down to two point.
No further witnesses for the prosecution. Nothing further. Yes.
I'm gonna call James Lauer.
Wanna swear your name? Do you swear that testimony you give today's here will be the truthful truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Uh James Lauer, I represent Kings Luau LLC.
And what is?
Screw your last name, sir?
Lo uh Lo W E R.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lauer, what's your position with Kings Luau?
I've been uh the general manager and operations oversight for the luau for the past three years.
Okay, so you were uh in that position in fiscal year two thousand sixteen through seventeen, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, and what uh are your duties with Kings Luau?
Uh to ensure that uh the event space and as well as poker site of the liquor that's provided on on site.
Okay, and uh do you know a company named Champs?
I do, I have a uh um a manager's blue certificate through the liquor commission from Champs.
Okay, and does Champs provide any liquor or food to Kings Luau?
Um they provide the the food and liquor, yes.
And what kind of food that do they provide?
Uh our luau fair, um I think this, yeah, our luau fair.
So I'm gonna show you a copy of an email. That was response sent back to Sang Von Fila. It says Champ salsa supplies food catering items like poke poi, breads, desserts. Is that consistent with your understanding?
That's yeah, yeah, that's part of the luau fair, yes.
Okay. And is that done on a pretty consistent basis in sixteen seventeen fiscal year?
I I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I have no further question.
I just have a few questions, thank you. When you say that they provide the luau fair, they provide only. They provide poke poi, bread, and dessert. Do they prepare that food? Do you know?
I think um I think the I I was it you that had requested the email from, okay. Um this, the email had caused some some issues because we didn't know really. I oversee multiple businesses for both Kings Luau and um and and Champs uh and and Sam both. Um and we were ta- I was tasked with starting a catering company to provide. Food for our luau specifically under the same stipulations that we had had with with um carrying alcohol, so. I think that was the confusion that when when people are saying what does Champs provide, I I I'm always under them something that we we all. We're all business partners and and champ and we provide this through those means of of business partnerships.
Okay. So when you say that. Where does the food come from?
It comes from a licensed kitchen uh at at University Avenue. Which which is the partnership company that we created for Farm to Four Catering, which would produce. Uh Hawaii grown foods for for the luau.
I'm sorry, what was the name of the business?
Farm to Farm to Four Catering LLC.
And that's a separate company from Champs and Kings Luau?
It's a partnership, yeah, it's a partnership between everybody. Uh and Champs uh Champs and they, I was I was brought in to be um a business partner because of how well I oversaw the luau operations and. And the liquor distribution through our luau.
So as a part of this partnership. I assume that your accounting is kept separately for each business?
Yes.
Okay. So does the luau provide receipts or invoices or? Anything like that to Champs on a weekly or monthly basis?
Yeah, I'm not sure on that, unfortunately, that's I I just do the business operations, but I don't do billing at all. But I believe so, I know we do that with our labor, um our luau, some of our luau staff is is employed. With Champs, I oversee both of those operations with Champs and with our Kings Luau employees.
Um and then as to, I'm gonna direct your attention really quickly to exhibit one. Um. What was the date that your email response was sent? Do you know or do you remember?
I don't, I I feel about two hundred emails a day like yourself, I'm sure, um yeah, I don't.
Thank you, nothing further.
Nothing further.
I have a couple of questions. Um so. Uh. Let's go back to the food question, because that's the question that we're asking right now, so. Again, who is the food being provided by? You mentioned that this is a, there's a kitchen that is not located in the Champs location.
Right.
That is providing.
We initially.
Um and you folks are somehow partnered, but um it is not Champs and it does not come from. The licensed premises where Champs is located, is that correct?
Um I was brought in about two years ago to survey Champs uh Champ's current location to include food. Um a food per- food permitting and or a restaurant space inside that. Um that was uh that was two years ago. It was deemed at that time that, that was two and a half years ago, it was deemed at that time that we couldn't do food in that location because of.
Question I'm asking.
So at that point.
I am asking, where does the food for Kings Luau come from?
Under the partnership company Farm before catering, which is located at one zero zero nine University Avenue.
Thank you, nothing further.
Mr. Lauer, um I'm gonna break this down even more grander.
Sure.
I heard three different companies, Champs, Kings Luau, and Front to Flaw. So three separate companies as far as you mean?
All the same, I believe all the same partners, but yeah, three.
Same partners in all three.
Uh yes, I believe so, I.
Are you, are you a partner of each of those three companies?
I'm I am.
When you say partner, are you a member, shareholder?
I'm a shareholder. Yes, of of, I'm sorry, we're talking about Champs, which I'm not a shareholder. No, no, I'm sorry.
Any interest, any ownership interest in Champs?
I do not, not at all. Yes, I do. I do as well.
When did Kings Luau first have any business relationship with Champs as far as you can recall?
Uh prior to prior to my arrival of at at the site, so I've been there for for three years.
And when did Front to Flaw have any business relationship with Champs as far as you know?
I think I for almost the entire three years that I have been there, it has been. They had provided some form of food to the luau. They've all, they they provided, yeah. Early on, it was it was more limited than what we, what I really consider now is a complete oversight of all the food. And and that through the partnership. Um yeah, I I I when I say partnerships, I think of uh of Sam and Glenn, the owners of of Kings Luau and. And Champs and and that, uh Glenn, Glenn, the owner of Champs is is also investor in other businesses of ours as well.
But you know, which is the contents of. Licenses exhibit one is sent to someone in.
Uh I do, he was a, he's an assistant manager. Uh I do, he was a, he's an assistant manager of ours, he's un- unregistered with the liquor commission under Champs or ourselves, and we were kind of worried at first because the initial response had went to him and we had we had didn't know if this was a a false uh a false inquiry because of he wasn't registered, he had just started with us at that time, so.
What is Okalet's spelling?
Um I I don't have this correct last name spelling, but it's Nolan, Nolan, N O L A N. Um Talibet, I believe, T A L I B E T, I could get that correct spelling.
Is he still affiliated with King's Lual?
Yes, yes.
Is he affiliated with Front to Fort?
No, he is not.
Do you know if he still works with King's Lual?
Yes, he does.
And the bottom portion of licensees exhibit one seems to be a response to the inquiry by the investigator, do you know who wrote that response?
This is this email right here?
Yes.
And it starts with Lual giving response.
You know, I do, I I wish I had the, I wish I had my emails, um. I do not, I can't answer that directly, I don't know if he if he, I mean, I know that I know that I've seen this email and I don't know if, I I I believe that I would use the same kind of terminology, but I'm not sure if that's his, if that's my email or it's his, he he's a very professional terminology guy as well.
This could be your email response?
Yes, this could possibly be my email response, the way that it's written. I don't know though, um like I said, I'd have to check my emails, um but we have the, we have similar writings, he's a very professional worded, prolixed person. Thank you, I greatly appreciate you guys and thank you for what you do, I take the oversight of the liquor with us very seriously and I thank you guys for allowing this opportunity, so thank you.
Okay, any further witnesses or?
No further witnesses, no other.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, members of the commission. We, the prosecution believes that we have established that Champs did in fact fail to provide catering services to the King's Lual in this matter, um there in addition to Mr. Von Fila's audit report and the numbers that he provided that show clearly that there was that King's Lual, I'm sorry, that Champs did not provide thirty percent of its gross liquor sales in food. Um the Mr. Lauer's testimony, I think, also kind of helps to cement that where the food comes from a licensed kitchen off premise, off of Champs premises on University Avenue at Farm to Fort Catering. Um that's not Champs, that is not at Champs location, that for almost three years that they have provided what he considered Lual fair to the Lual and that um the email response, albeit unsigned, does does say that Champs provided supplies food catering like poke poi, breads, and dessert, which seems to contradict Mr. Lauer's testimonies today. Um as such, we ask that this commission find Champs to be guilty as charged.
Okay, Mr. Kitchen?
Yeah, the charge here is not the thirty percent, the charge is whether any food was provided as part of the catering function, because the thirty percent is a completely different rule. The licensee files report, which is exhibit C, which shows uh fifty-seven thousand four hundred fifty food sales, so whether the accountant said that their kitchen was being renovated, obviously food sales coming out of Champs. Based upon the POS system, the extrapolation that the auditor did shows food sales of twenty-nine thousand two twenty-six, there's a difference that he can't even explain. Um then asked the uh the accountant, Ms. Kunsaku, whether there were any food sales included in the catering. There is, there obviously is food being provided by Champs, there's the email response, there's Mr. Lauer's response. Um I think it's sufficient and burden lies with the city.
Motion to deliver.
Second.
Now back on the official record of commissioners. Before I make my motion, I wanna thank the council for the professionalism. Because I mean, there is no cases, so thank you for that. The motion I'm gonna make is to find that the principal unit the burden proved should find that the licensee is in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-one point seven B of the laws of the liquor commission of the Supreme Court.
Second motion.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
The licensee used guilty of violation charged three dash eighty-two dash thirty-one point seven B.
Recommended fine is a five hundred dollars.
Um motion to a further recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. And the number nineteen, charge number two, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kitchen. Following agenda item number twenty, you have any administrative matter? You need adjourn.
Oh, yeah.